All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, October 3rd, 2016. We're starting a little late tonight because people are having different conversations. All right, can we take attendance, Rebecca?
Anthony Amato. Valerie Anderson. Alan Brown. Greg Kava. Rebecca Devine here. Michelle Gora. James Hirschfield.
Here.
Jennifer Pote. Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Peter Tagley.
Here. All right, and we have two vacancies in Roxbury, which I'll get to shortly. All right, so Jennifer and Alan are not present. This item regarding welcome new board members, it's not completed as of this moment, but it's my understanding that the town of Roxbury is having a town meeting at which two ladies have put their names forward to be elected to be Board of Education members. If that happens, they should be with us either tonight or at our next meeting. So we'll look forward to that. All right, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items, item three. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board? All right, seeing no one, I'll move on then. Consent agenda, item four, which consists of our education meeting, September 26, 2016, minutes. Anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing no one, it's approved. Report of the Chair. I just want to commend, step coming in tonight, seeing people here early, all the work that's going on in committees with the board members. I appreciate everyone's time, that they're devoting to their job as board members. So, thank you. Superintendent's report. Dr. Scantino?
Yes, I -- the great news is that our students went down to Washington, DC and got first place for the video. So, "The World I Want to Live In," I don't know exactly.
It was incredible.
Went on today. I did email Mrs. Pitt, but I haven't heard, but I'm sure they're having a fabulous time. Yesterday, they met a whole bunch of different stars, including Ty Burrell from Modern Family and, oh my goodness, who was the other woman? The Stranger Guy, who wrote "The Stranger Show," and then another woman, African-American woman, I can't remember her name.
A person?
No, I'll look at it on my phone and let you know. But anyway, we are so proud of the students, and I can tell you that one of the great little byproducts and awards that comes with this is the students in the video production class will have a mentor from the American Film Institute to work with them. And I can tell you, in my former life, we had a similar situation with PBS, and we had a mentor to work with students in film. And what a difference that makes to get feedback from people in the field. So, I just want to commend all of the students who worked on it, and Mrs. Pitt, and Mrs. Files, and everyone else who really came together to make this happen. And I also want to say thank you. I don't know if it was the PTO or the scholarship, but I know there have been people who have helped finance the trip down to Washington. So, we also appreciate that. And when the kids come back, we'll have them back to tell their stories about this wonderful experience that I believe is life-changing. This is a life-changing experience. So, we're really so thrilled.
Obviously, it was amazing to receive the news that they came in first place. It was an accomplishment we can all be proud of. Oh, I'm sorry, Rebecca.
I also wanted to thank Pat and Kim and the administration and their support of this wonderful project, because from the top down, the kids needed the support and they got it. So, thank you for that.
All right, thanks, Peter.
I just wanted to ask a question. Public rela -- we don't really have a public relations arm of the board, is that correct? We don't have someone who, whether it be on the board or not on the board, that provides the public--
At this point, no, we don't. We had hired someone, that person's no longer with us.
Well, what -- oh, go ahead, you want to continue?
This is where it was reminding me that Karen Files does work for us. I mean, that any work that needs to be done is done.
The only thing, I would say, there are many good things that happen that never really get to the public, just what the superintendent was just talking about.
Yes, the president.
And there are other many things that colleges could get to. There doesn't seem to be an organized effort to make sure that the stature of the system is raised. I really think we need to take a look at that somehow and find a way to improve the public relations of the board and its system. I think that would enhance, you know, every aspect of what we're doing.
I certainly think we can always improve in that area. I will tell you that we are currently working on the Class of 2016 newsletter that's being mailed to all homes. So, that is something new this year. We always do the one in May, now we're doing one in the fall. We also always send out the Region Review, and I don't know if you all know, we have so many, I don't know the exact number, but so many community members and grandparents and aunts and uncles who get that publication every other week, because anytime someone's in a school, we ask them for their email. And we ask kids, you know, you can bring in anybody who wants it. So, that has grown exponentially in the community. We try to get, you know, the newspapers here as much as we can and send press releases, et cetera, et cetera. And certainly, we can do more, but part of Karen Files' job is that, that is in her title. And we have in the back there Alexa, who is now filming, and she's been helping get things out. If you go to our website and you go on YouTube, and all our videos are there, we're on channel, I think it's 196 now, there's a lot going on. But, you know, we can always do more, and we're happy for any ideas.
Yeah, well, I'm just concerned about outside of that. You want to identify, if our students outside of the area somehow, people, you know, maybe it's a community. And then you let the students in town, the families may want to live in, and get attention. That's my --
We can do more of that.
It has to be like in a regional newspaper or something.
Whatever, something that really deals with public relations, really at public relations.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Valerie?
I agree completely. I think that we went down the road of PR and we hired someone, and it didn't quite work out. But this isn't rocket science. I mean, if we could get someone in PR, someone who has worked for a newspaper, they have a list of outlets, they throw together a press release and send it to those outlets. Because, I mean, look at the great scores that we had, that we were just talking about, that, you know, shout out to Pat, those are incredible scores that you and your staff have developed. We had our conversation last week about it. I've been looking to see if those things have been in the paper. They have not. This, I've been looking all over the place, I know a little bit about the press, and I haven't seen even a bullet come out of the White House about this yet, and maybe it's supposed to come from us. I really would like to allocate money, limited, to search again for a PR person, because this is, you know, we can't fall on present staff, it's just too hard. It should be someone who's been in the business. It's just not that big a deal to write a press release, pithy, short, and send it on to the -- and I'm sure our reporters would love that, because it's synthesized for them.
I do want to just say that Lumari, I believe it was her paper who did an article on the kids and going to Washington, am I right, Lumari? Wasn't, it was in the Waterbury Republican. Oh, you're the Voices, I'm sorry Lumari. It was in the Waterbury Republican. We did send out two press releases last week, one about all the work that has gone on in the buildings that we talked about, and about the test scores and the increase. I'm not exactly sure, and I guess I have to do a little work on it. I'm not exactly sure if you send a press release, if they'll always put it in, you know? So, I don't know. We have to work on that a little more to follow up.
Maybe you could call the writer of the story and tell them what occurred, and maybe they'd like to write a little follow-up.
And the other thing is NPR was here, did a video of the students, wanted to wait to see if they won. So, I know NPR will be back to do a story on the kids. And we sent that to everyone. So, we are trying very hard, but, you know, any help is always appreciated, because it is, you know, even when our last PR person was here, she gave us some good tips, and so, she was a help in certain ways.
And once again, I don't expect this to come from your office. I think it's worthwhile to engage someone again, who is more in the trenches and not just talking about, you know, it's just sending out one or two paragraphs to certain news outlets, making their life easier and making ours more apparent to people, because we're here in the hills and the woods, and it's hard for people to cover our meetings or cover us. It's worth it.
All right. Jim? Anyone else? Yes, Greg.
I agree. I think Valerie is absolutely right. We should do that, and we need to get the word out, because this is an exceptional school that has achieved exceptional results in a lot of areas. And unfortunately, it's, sometimes it's just shared within a small group of people, and the word needs to get out to the wider world, and especially the people in our communities, but also the people in the nearby communities and outside our communities. That's critical. They need to know that Chappag achieves great things here. We are able to get great things done here, and I think that's important. And I'm so proud of these kids, of our faculty and our staff and administration. I think we've done an outstanding job on this, and it's not the only thing we've done an outstanding job on, and people need to know that.
All right, go ahead.
One more thing, please?
Yes.
I just, in the moment that Greg was speaking, Googled "public relations firms in Hartford," I came up with three immediately. They're worth having a conversation with. No, we're not going to spend a huge amount of money, but yes, we've got to. The AgriSTEM, so many people don't know where we are in the process. We're causing more confusion perhaps, because we haven't been able to broadcast what we're doing. So, I got three right here.
All right. Anyone else? All right, do you want to continue?
Yeah. I don't seem to have them in front of me, but the superintendent goals, I think Debbie has them to hand them out? Oh, you all have them, I just don't have them. I just --
Bad optics there, though.
I made copies for everybody, no? Okay, okay. Jim doesn't have them either. Well, whatever, we'll share. I am not going to go through all of them at this point, because I'm not sure if they are truly finalized. I didn't get feedback from some of the board after our last meeting, but I think it's a good idea maybe at this point. And I've spoken to Chairman, that maybe the whole board can look at them, and then we can talk about further steps at another time on how we're going to move forward with the evaluation process. For those of you in the audience, we're trying to work on a new process, and so we are plodding along and trying to come to some consensus. So, I did want to give this to you, and for those of you who are in the audience, just so you know, there are, the first two have to do with the net generation accountability standards and the scores that come out. We're doing a new survey of staff and students and community members and families about our school system. Of course, working and in becoming the Agri-science program, but also increasing our STEM offerings, working on the Talent and Gifted Program we just began, continuing in our technology development, which is never-ending, looking at how we're going to deal with the different configurations in the schools as we have a declining enrollment, looking at and aligning the staff roles and responsibilities in the district, really looking at the Ramp program in our College and Career Center. As you know, we are trying to be recognized as an ASCA model program. There you go, number 11 and 12 fall right under what we just spoke about. Continue to develop and implement a comprehensive communication and marketing plan, improve communications, continuing to manage the AgSTEM program, and then working on the NIASK recommendations. So, those are the goals, and they are a work in progress, but I did want to give you where we were up until this point. And I also just wanted to let you know, we have an appointment of Lori McGovern as a literacy tutor at WPS. And so, I think that is my --
Just to follow up with Pat's comment, the goals should look actually very familiar to the board, because it's basically a work between blending what Pat and her staff originally came up with, what we had talked about as a board. This represents the combination of that work, and we just need to finalize, as Pat said, so we can move on. So, just so you understand where they're coming from, it should, again, look familiar to everybody, because it does reflect our collective work and working with Pat to get the final wording down right, so we can get going, which we should have, hopefully, by the time we have our next board meeting, for sure.
It's evident that it is the product of some work, that a lot of time has been spent on it. So, thank you very much for those involved with doing that. Look forward to approving a product at some point in the future. Anyone else, Valerie?
A couple of questions. Pat, you agree with these goals?
Yes.
And this was developed by the committee and with you and administrators, or with you and the committee?
It started, it's been a process, my original goals were with me and the committee, I'm sorry, and my administrative staff. And then the committee put together some goals based on conversations with the board. Then we met, and I reworked the board's goals with my goals, with my staff. Then, we came together and we kind of like combined all three different versions to come up with this version. So, you know, we are moving forward. There are a lot of hefty goals here. I think we all agree that they're a work in progress, and we're looking for continuous improvement. One of the next steps that we're going to have to talk about with the board at some point is, these are the goals, but this is not the evaluation tool. So, we're going to have to move in that direction still. There's still a lot of work to do, but I have, with this document, this document which is, it says Revised 92616, because you have so many of them, you can't keep track. I've already met with the staff, and we've delineated the work and who's working on what, and who's taking the lead in different areas. So, you know, if there are any tweaks, they hopefully are minor, because we've already started moving. I mean, it's October already, school year goes fast. So, yes, you know, they're the goals.
And a couple of questions. Next generation accountability score is 81.2% to 83.2%. The accountability index score comes from what? And this could be to the committee, too.
Right. If you recall last year, and you probably don't, but last year, the State Department of Education developed a new way of assessing school systems, not based on just one test score. So, they have things like your absentee rate, your amount of students who are enrolled in art classes and are taking the arts, amount of students who have passed the physical fitness test in fourth grade and 10th grade, test scores, all of these things. So, it comes out, well, you know, it's, this would be the second year. So, what happens is, you get points if you meet the target. And so, last year, this was kind of the baseline data, you see, we were at 81.2, and as the region. And so, we wanted to move two points each year in the positive direction. Now, you know, there are some concerns, because last year, the state had made some errors about how they were calculating things, because what's happening is, the state pulls the data from Power School, and Power School, Power School's a very interesting, intricate data. So, for example, every course has a number. And so, for example, just say Art 1, just for example, it has a certain number. Well, if your number does not align with the number at the state, they didn't include it. So, that's why we're very, we had a deficit last year. I don't know if you remember, our Art number was really low, and people were unhappy.
It was shocking, because we're such an art school, but it was labeling.
Right. So, this year, Lori Ferreira and Karen Files went through every data point in the accountability system, in Power School, called the state many times, got misinformation from them, and had to correct the state. And so, my only concern, and I've discussed this, is that, yes, we're going to use that data point, but we just have to make sure that it is valid and reliable. And I'm not sure in year two that the state has done that. But I think the committee understood that, you know, it's a work in progress, but it is something where you can see growth. The problem with that report, especially in our elementary schools, is because they're so small, a lot of the data points are NA. They're not applicable, because you have to have 20 students in a data point. So, it's, you know, it's a work in progress. We'll see how it goes.
Okay. I mean, I'm just concerned that we don't buy into this as our benchmark, if indeed there are some problems itself with the index, despite hard work, that we're going to, you know, focus on whether you got the 2% increase or the 1.59, you know, that kind of thing.
These are goals, and so, if it's found that they're impossible to reach, or that they're, you know, then they can be modified, if that's the case, or if they're, you know, if it should be larger than that, it could be modified. So, I think it's a goal, nobody's --
Well, it, oh my God.
Nobody's stuck to it.
I don't know. It's a mic problem, I can't think. Yeah, but it is, it's the standard. Thank you.
It's a 2% increase.
I'm channeling Trump. I can't think. Indeed, I can't think. Well, if this is the kind of index for which your performance is, I mean, I just want the board to realize, this might not be the right index until it's more consistent. And so, the board has to just remember that, and just at the end of our evaluation period, say, oh, she didn't hit her 2%. Oh, my God, what are we going to do? And I have another question about this, too. Just definition. Recognized ASCA model program, aka Ramp. What the heck is that?
If you recall, maybe you don't, Todd Dyer, this year, it's last year, gave a presentation. He is working with a consultant who's been working here since I've gotten here, and she's a fabulous consultant. She came to one of our meetings at one point, my first year here, and they are, with all of the great work that they've done in the counseling office, they are applying to be recognized as a model program. And it's a model program in school counseling. So, that report is due in October, and we would hear in the spring. So, that's part, that's what Ramp is.
Okay. And that's something they're seeking to do, and I remember that conversation now.
Right. There's only one other school in Connecticut that's recognized as a Ramp accredited program in counseling.
Is that Taft College? What's Taft College?
Taft College now, the other part of that goal was, the committee wanted us to benchmark best practices in counseling, and to look at a couple of different counseling programs, and Taft College is one of the ones that Todd is going to use.
This is Taft School?
It's a college and career program.
Taft College and Career, it's Taft School, probably. Yeah, it's a high school.
Okay. A private, a private school, and when we had a conversation about it, I was definitely against comparing us to any private school, because they don't have the issues that we do. And I'm just going on the record with that. Okay. As long as the committee and you, more importantly, like these goals, and you've already kind of started the process, then it's up to the administrators to help you with these goals, reach these goals, and for the board to, you know, have a conversation about the appropriate time. And when would that be? What's our schedule on this?
I'm not certain, the committee hasn't told me, but these are, it's an interim report. This is what's being proposed, is being passed back and forth.
But when do we approve this as a board?
I don't know, at some point we will. I'm not exactly sure. Anybody knows?
Shouldn't we do this sooner rather than later, if they're already at work?
I'm sure, I know that people are trying to get it done. I would assume within the month or so, but I don't know.
What more work has to be done on this for approval, other than conversation on the board level? Which is why I'm belaboring this.
Okay. I'm not exactly sure what else has to be done. The committee, I assume, has to meet and go through, I don't know. They may want to meet and go through it, see if they have any last minute changes. Michael?
I just wanted to say to the committee that I think that the idea of looking at a counseling program, even at a private school like that, is an excellent idea. I don't think that we're saying that we are on a level playing field with a school like that, but I think that certainly they're recognized as an excellent private school in the area, and I think that we might be able to learn a few things from them in terms of that practice.
Anthony?
You're out of sync, Michael.
Good thing I have a big mouth.
You were on and turned yourself off.
Hopefully, everybody can hear me. Now I am, yeah.
Yeah. Pat, just a clarification, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't, didn't Todd come up with looking at Taft on his own? I'm not even sure we got to the point where he saw anything suggesting benchmarking a private school. I think he had them in his sights on his own, didn't he?
No, 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 no. What happened was, after the second, the first meeting, when we had just College and Career Center looking at it and making improvements, the board group came back with a more specific, and then
He selected Taft.
Then, after I met with the administrators, I'm assuming Kim Gallo spoke to him, because I asked the administrators, each different group, to go back, and this is what the board's asking for, this is what we asked for. We look at it, and he chose Taft.
He chose Taft.
But not just, like, out of the top of his head, he did it with the
Got it.
Impetus.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Me again.
Yes.
But once again, we are a public school, we have to provide a great education to all children who come on our doorstep and do not pay $35,000, $40,000 a year. We have special ed children that we are proudly preparing, that private high school would not. There are so many differences, that I'm glad that you took the recommendation of the committee seriously, and that Todd has already found a program like this, but I'm against it, just for the record. We are a public school, our guidance program is excellent. We all know the intricacies of applying to college, a lot of this is legacy-related, or financial package-related, or things that have nothing to do with any private school. Plus, we never know what a private school is doing, because they don't publish like we have to. We don't know test results, we don't know SATs, we don't know where they ultimately go to school, unless Taft, or Westover, or any number of private schools decide to put those in the paper at graduation. So, I'm just saying, we're doing damn good on our own. We have a cohort of good high schools that we can draw information from. If Todd decides to go and get even more information, that's greatly to the credit of that department, but I am against our committee and evaluation saying we have to look outside for that information. We've got it within public schools in the state of Connecticut.
All right, thank you. Michelle?
I just want to clarify, the intent of this was not to compare the results of where the students go, but to look at best practices in program. For example, how many, how many times do their counselors meet with their students? Or how many college fairs Or how many college fairs do they go on? Whatever their, the program, and career as well, you know, whatever it is that the, these programs, and truthfully, you know, he must have chosen Taft, because he feels that they're a good program, looking at how many times they visit. And so it's the program, it's not actually the results and where the kids go to. It's just looking at, are we doing everything that we can? And I'll be the first to go on the record and saying, I think they're doing a fabulous job. But that doesn't mean that there aren't some tricks or some ideas out there that we might not be aware of, you know, working, doing essay writing over the summer, you know, workshops. I don't, I don't know. Whatever it is, they'll find out. But it was certainly not to compare where our kids go to other schools.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Costino?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right.
By the way, my numbers weren't so terribly off. 35,000 per day students, 48,000 for boarding.
I did have one other thing. I just wanted to share the enrollment. Do I have that?
Yes.
I feel like I don't have anything. I don't know. Okay, so I just, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but we have 706 students enrolled.
This is as of what date?
This is as of October 1st. These are the real, it says October 3rd enrollment, but these, it is today. It's today. Okay. October 1st was this Saturday. Right. So this is the, the reason this enrollment is so important is because this is the enrollment that is the official enrollment with the state for the school year. So you have 706 students total. The projection was 690, so you can see that. Then it has the amount of students from staff, Sherman, and others are tuitioned in, for the most part. And then it divides the amount of students. So really, we have 660 students that are ours. So honest, without the Sherman, and without the tuitioning in, and without the staff, we're really down by 30 students, based on the projection from Peta Prada.
Well, it shows that some of those efforts have paid off to increase the enrollment.
Yes. And that, you can add it.
Okay. Any question? Ah, Michelle?
Just a quick question. So the official one that's turned into the state, it's kids in the building, right? It's like, who showed up that day? Is that, isn't that right? Bob?
The overall population of the students registered here on that date.
Oh, registered. Okay. Good. That's all I wanted. Not present that day.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Different measure.
Okay. Valerie?
This is really important, so I just want to get it very clear. So if I'm reading this correctly, and I probably am not, let me focus for a minute. Burnham has 45?
No, 45 residents.
Okay.
But total enrollment is 47, correct?
Forty-seven.
But that, but when you, when you look at what, this is, what's important about this, these numbers, is this is where the percentages come, when you deal with budget and anything that has to do with the towns. So the last column, where there's 660 students, that's the amount of students that you get billed for. So Burnham, in the elementary school, gets billed for 45 K5. Booth Free has 82.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this is not, oh, yes, it is correct. I'm sorry. Oh, wait, maybe not. I don't want to say that, because she didn't take out the Washington primary kids, so, but there's 660. We can give you the amount in each town exactly.
The town is at the bottom.
Oh, it's at the bottom. Thank you. I'm sorry. 126 for Bridgewater, 224 for Roxbury, 310 for Washington.
Okay.
That's the breakout.
When we look at the individual elementary schools, though...
Yes.
We have inflated Washington, because we include the pre-K...
Yes.
Of 50 kids.
Right.
Coming from 42, is that right? From 42? No, that's, I forgot what we had last year. About up maybe 10 kids?
We're about up, I think we had 32 students last year in Reach.
32 last year, 50 this year?
Fifty-two total in Reach.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two total enrolled in the Reach program.
How do we bill if they're going to Washington primary and they live in Bridgewater?
Because you're billing it off of the bottom line. They're broken out, that whole line, PK, under Washington. You look on the extreme right, they're broken into the various towns.
Okay, 91526.
That's correct.
Okay, so the billing goes 91526, not 50, because they're physically in Washington primary.
That's where they're located, but it's billed by town of residents.
Okay. But I am a little concerned that people will look as I did, that you have 45 in Burnham, 82 in Booth, 162 at Washington. And that's a fallacious number, because that, let's face it, the biggest growth here is pre, is PK, and they're all housed in Washington. So we have to be very, very careful to take those other kids out of that, and not look at it as a grand total. So we need a new grand total. What's our grand total? 135 at Washington?
It'd be the 135.
Yes.
That's the grand total at Washington.
Okay. So 135 at Washington, 82 at Booth, 45 at Burnham. Right?
Yes.
I mean, these are important numbers, otherwise I wouldn't ask so many questions.
All right. We'll move on. Thank you. Committee reports. Building Committee, Greg, anything?
Yes, as a matter of fact. The Building Committee met tonight, and...
This is the AgSTEM Building Committee?
Yes. The AgSTEM Building Committee.
Go ahead.
The Building Committee met tonight, and we reviewed the plans for the school, and we discussed the issue that seemed to be what was driving the state in terms of the DAS, which was that it's not so much that we have, you know, I've gone back and forth on these plans, saying, you know, gee, we, if you look at their per pupil numbers, it doesn't work, it doesn't make any sense, because we have to have large buildings for horses and for animals and whatnot. But what it turns out that their real concern is, is not that we have too much square footage in the AgSTEM for the number of students enrolled in AgSTEM. What we have are too much square footage in the existing school for the number of students enrolled in the existing school. And they would, they had asked if we could be more efficient by putting more of the AgSTEM program within the footprint of the existing Chappag. So the purpose for this meeting, I had asked Chuck Booze to let me know whether he thought this was in the ballpark of something we should do, before we authorized any money to spend to prepare any plans. And he indicated that he had tested it, he had looked at it, and he felt that we could incorporate, we would still need to build the equestrian building, the large animal building, the greenhouses and sales area, but the classroom portion of the building, he believes can be entirely incorporated within the footprint of Chappag. And in fact, by putting one of the labs down within the science complex, and the food area into what's existing, our existing food prep area, which is just north of the TV studio, that we can actually fit the rest of the classrooms into the areas at the far north side of the building. So we do not need to put anything on the southwest, southwest side of the building. It can all, except for that lab that goes into the science area, we can get most of it within that portion of the building. It means moving things around, it means relocating certain aspects of the existing program to other areas within this side of the building, the south, southernly side of the building. But he believes that it can be done. So the Building Committee has authorized him. If you remember, this board authorized the Building Committee to spend up to $30,000 to deal with plans. We have authorized the expenditure of $10,000 to produce a set of conceptual, conceptual plans, showing this, as well as a new site plan, showing the amendments to the site plan. And in addition, he will also be giving us other information on precisely where, where things move. So that's what we're getting from them. And we've authorized him to go forward with that work. We expect to have that in our hands, possibly as early as the 14th. If not, it'll be there for the next Building Committee meeting, which will be at 5:30 on the 16th, 17th, on Monday, the 17th of October. Yeah, so we should be able to, we expect to come to you with a recommendation on the meeting of the 17th, with a plan for going forward with the, with the AgSTEM program with the state, going to DAS with these conceptual plans, making sure that everyone's on board. And if that's the case, then we can perhaps recommend going further with the program. But we do believe that the, the state is, seems to be good on the numbers, and we think that this will probably work. Yes.
Take questions, Greg.
All right. Valerie, I'll start with you. You were first.
Okay. So I was heartened to see that indeed the state has approved the AgSTEM, has encouraged us to go forward, but to work more in, within our space, which really makes a lot of good common sense. But, and going forward as quickly as possible on plans, very, very essential. My question, though, is, we have an approved referendum. If that project should be less than what was mandated by the voters, and I'm hoping it will be, but I know sometimes renovation of space can be more expensive than new space, will we have to go back to the voters, number one, to change the amount, and number two, probably more importantly, because we're working with, within existing walls, which is more renovate to new than anything else, correct? Our grant money might be less. So how do, this is uncharted waters.
We understand that, but the difficulty we've got is, is until we actually have a set of conceptual drawings, we can't get the cost estimates from ONG. So the first step is the conceptual drawings, and then we will very quickly after that receive estimates of cost. There will be probably differences in the grant, but also the renovation, they expect to be less per square foot than new construction. So if that, this renovation would be less per square foot than new construction. That's their expectation. And if that proves out, once they do the estimating, if that proves out, then it will probably equalize it out. We hope that the total project number, I can't promise that until I see numbers. We are hoping that the total project number would come in less, not more. And if it comes in less, then we don't have to do anything, because we were authorized by the voters to spend up to that amount of money. So the goal here is to try to do this. We had always intended to do value engineering on this project, and hope to reduce the cost of it. This is one step in that process, and we will see where this leads us, and whether or not we have to do further engineering in order to reduce costs, to bring it in line with what would the voters approve. But that's every expectation that will be the case.
So this is a, hopefully, hopefully, a good result, because we have reconfirmed our numbers on attendance with the state, and I know we'll give more information to the voters, and of course, the board has to approve first, but the numbers have been looked at yet again, and also there's a possibility that the expenditure will be less.
Yeah, but I don't want to get, I don't want to say that, because right now, I do not have enough information to tell you that's the case. But that is, that is the direction. We are, we are looking to find value, and looking to make sure that we can, and by the way, this program, as sort of retrenched into the building, eliminates nothing in terms of the program itself. It is still the full program, but it's being done with a little bit different spatial arrangement. The other thing is, it may help us with some traffic circulation outside as well. So the site plan will be slightly different, because the greenhouses will be slightly relocated a little bit further to the south as, as part of that. And so with all of that, it's going to change, but we, there's no basis for concluding it will cost more or less. We do not know. We are hoping it will be less, but we do not know. I just want to be clear on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Greg?
Yeah, Mike.
As far as the, the numbers are concerned, I know what the latest numbers that we've generated, and the state has agreed upon, are very conservative numbers. And I think that we did that on purpose, and I think the state wants to be conservative in terms of the numbers of potential students that would be coming to the AgSTEM program. What if we're more successful than that conservative estimate? And we have a lot of interest, and I'm hoping that that will be the case, and how much wiggle room would this new configuration give us for additional growth in terms of the AgSTEM program? I guess what I would hate for us to happen would be to be in the same boat that Nanowog is right now, which is actually turning away students. I would hate for us to have to do that. Well, I believe, based on the conversations we've had with Chuck Booze, I believe that we will have sufficient flexibility, that in other words, we're not vastly reducing the square footage devoted to it, that we would have built anyway. We're moving things around and doing things differently, and we still have perhaps some surplus space within the building, that if things were reorganized, could be used in the event we had to add more classrooms. We may not be able to add it all down at that end, but don't forget, we are not, with the exception of the food prep area, we are not going south of that hallway that enters the building. If you know, there's an entrance to the building up there, so the art department will remain entirely where it is. But in the event we needed to expand the program further, you still would have that space up there, and would be able to reallocate art to a different part of the building, if, if that occurred. So there's flexibility built into this approach, in the event we needed to expand. The only thing, if you, if the, if the program got large enough that it, it needed to expand beyond that, then we'd have to be looking down at this end of the building, or looking at putting another addition. And there may be further grant money available, should that occur, but I think right now, we're focused on, let's build this, let's be conservative, and if we, if we need expansion, we have some built into our building, because we're not utilizing all the space that's here. And so that, that really is the best we can do, I think, on that. Yes, Michelle?
I think that's great news, that Charlie thinks he can do it, and I think it makes a lot of sense. Valerie touched on one of my questions, just about the reimbursement rate for renovation versus new, and just keeping an eye on that, but I realize we can't get those answers until we have the drawings. My only other concern was just from a program point of view. I'm glad to hear that we're not cutting space, because I had the same concern that Michael did, that, you know, I think we might actually be able to get more students than we thought, or than we reported to the state, and I would hate to be turning away students like Nanowog. That would kind of defeat a lot of the purpose. But I also just want to make sure it makes sense from a program, I guess if you're just moving one lab to this side, that's probably not too crazy, but I know a lot of the, in the agri-science programs that we looked at, a lot of their classroom spaces all grouped together, because they are related to each other, so they can step out of the classroom to where some of the animals are. And so just making sure it still makes sense, program, in the way they use the space, not just can we fit it in, and sprinkle it all around our building, and then have kids running all over.
Yeah, no, actually, we're not sprinkling it around the building. The only thing that's moving down here is, if you remember, we were going to build five science rooms. Four of them were going to be laboratory, full laboratories, and one of them was going to be a lab classroom. The lab classroom is the piece that will be devoted to AgSTEM. So we're going to, you know, so we're not actually giving up a lab, a science lab, we're actually converting a, a, a science classroom to an AgSTEM lab. In addition, a piece of the food service moves into an existing food prep area in our building, which is right next to the AgSTEM. The rest of it remains at the far north end of the building, immediately adjacent to the greenhouses, and then to the animal buildings. The animal buildings are basically not moving.
Okay.
They're probably, unless Chuck does something different when he looks at the site plan after he rejiggers the classroom building. It's basically the classrooms that are moving a little bit to the south, but they're moving into a block a little bit to the south. Now, there will be an addition on the building. That addition will be for the, basically, if you remember from the plan, there were the greenhouses, and there was space immediately adjacent to the greenhouses behind them. That will remain as a standalone building. The only thing that's moving is the classroom component, which was down a hallway from the, the greenhouses. That will be moving into the existing building.
Wasn't that, though, allocated for like, maintenance, like tractor repair?
There was. There was a section of that, and that will actually also remain outside of this area. That will be, that will be kept, in fact, it'll be relocated, it'll be located in a better way, I think, but that will be a separate standalone piece. So I should, when I say the classroom building, it's actually about three quarters of the classroom building is what moves into the existing building, and one piece of it goes down here.
Okay.
So it's really just the one lab piece. And it actually is not bad to have the AgSTEM lab in our science wing.
No, that's a great tie together.
So it's a great tie.
And AP environmental moves, you know, the faculty, it's great.
Yeah, so I think it actually works, and this is what Chuck had come up with, based on his look at it, and also Pat has worked with Kim and our education professionals are on board with this, and this should work. And we should know within two weeks, we should have it in our hands and be able to touch it and look at it and see what it looks like. And then the next big question is, what is it going to cost? And the reimbursement rates will almost certainly be different. They'll be less for, you know, renovation than they would be for building new. But the hope is, is that the overall cost ends up being less. Otherwise, the state would have really not accomplished a lot if we end up having to spend more to create something there. They may have saved a couple of dollars at their end, but they won't have accomplished anything for the program and for the creation of the program. So I think we should get to a good place, but I can't, that's just a, that's just a hope at this point, it's not a prediction.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, Valerie?
Washington Board has been invited, along with Pat, to attend the Board of Finance and, I think, Selectmen Meeting on the 13th to talk about AgSTEM. And because we've made, we have some pretty dramatic changes, I think it would be important to perhaps give the Washington delegation some kind of synopsis of what's going on or something, so that we can apprise the Washington town leaders what's, you know, about the information they're requesting. And that's on the 13th, next Thursday.
Looking at the.
Seven o'clock.
I have a suspicion, though, that, I mean, while we could do that, we would be giving them a half of a presentation, which is what you got tonight. I mean, this is really a half of a presentation, because, one, we don't have the plans, we haven't seen where he's proposed, what he's proposing to do, and the second thing we don't have are the costs. So I don't know whether it would be anything other than sort of a little bit of the presentation. You know, we could say what we're thinking of doing and how we're thinking of working it, and we could say what our hopes are, but I don't like that as a presentation, because it's half the information, and I think we'd be wasting their time.
Well, we're not, we're not giving a presentation, they just want to ask us where we stand as representing the town of Washington and how to go forward, because I know there have been some rumors swirling, and I know that the town of Washington supports us, the Board of Selectmen do, so they just need a conversation, and they scheduled this before some of this information came through. So we need to have something to update them. This is just information, knowing it's in progress.
Do you want me to come?
Well, no.
Hey, you could be my date, but I don't know what they're going to say.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking, because I'm happy, I'm happy to have you present it. I just won't have plans to give you to look at.
It's not our meeting, Greg.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just.
But we need info, because there's been not a U-turn, but there's a change.
I mean, I think the most you can report is what I've said tonight. I don't think there's anything more.
I think that's really useful, though. I learned a lot.
As long as you feel you can do it, fine. If you need any more information, let me know, and we'll get it to you.
I think they just need kind of reassurance that they're moving forward, but obviously moving forward in a different way now.
Plus, I know that there's a member of the Washington Board of Selectmen with us tonight, so I'm sure his ears are pierced.
Ooh, maybe he can jump in?
All right. Anyone else?
Can Mr. Work Open say anything? Jim? Do you have anything?
We're not expecting coal, zoo, light, because we're interested in what the state has said to the nation, but we're interested in what's before it, and we just want to establish that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
That makes sense.
Well, you heard it tonight, here, so that's where we're at. Anthony? Oh, yeah, so I hear. No, no, no.
Oh, we'll come.
Yeah, we know that.
Coming.
Anthony?
So that the, so it's great that you've got, you know, Charlie moving in a direction with some guidance or some boundaries. The next thing that's going to come quickly on the heels of that is, to finish out, to get back to the overall numbers, is the enrollment. So it's not really a question for you, Greg, it's more of a question for Pat, I guess, for the next meeting. There's been some questions, and I think we need to settle on what we believe the new enrollment number projection is going to look like. You presented something to the state, there have been some questions about even some of the math, perhaps, being off on some of the tables. There was a question about how the methodology was used, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the next board meeting, not, I don't want to litigate this tonight, but I'd like to get an update on what that looks like, what number we're going to use to ultimately divide that construction cost to figure out, you know, what the overall economics are going to look like. So it's more of a request just to get, to stay ahead of this curve.
Okay. So we'll get, we'll try to come up with an enrollment number. Anything else?
You want to move on, but this is just so important. Maybe, Greg, when the information comes back, even in its raw form, we should have a meeting of the whole, go over all of this. As Anthony was saying, numbers, plans affect on, you know, the whole scope of what we're going to do, if indeed, we, God forbid, we need more money, or how that works out with the referendum. So as much information to the widest number of us, not just the building committee.
No, that's fine. We're going to have a report for you, and we're going to be able to present to you the new conceptual drawings, as well as site plan. We could do that at the meeting of the 17th, and I've asked Pat to see about putting that on the agenda, so we could have that discussion there. And that will bring you up to speed with that, and then I don't know, once we have those plans, and once we think that's the direction we want to go in, at that point, we can estimate the cost, we get a better idea of the cost, because again, it's, until they see a plan, there's not much that ONG can do to figure out the cost. But that's sort of where we are. And again, we may be doing more value engineering on this project if we feel the costs are still too high, or they're not in line with what we want. We will continue to look at that, to see how we can deliver the full program with the best possible result, with the longest, you know, the best buildings we can build for the price that makes sense. And that's what we're doing. And we don't give up just because we've, you know, we think that, you know, that we've reached the final line, we continue to value engineer.
All right, is there anyone else for Greg? Valerie?
Is it possible, then, that we can say, or is it too soon, that the 17th is AgSTEM night? I mean, it seems to me we're kicking a lot of cans, and I know this is a new development, and we have a lot of parties that have to be, you know, involved, but.
Well, I'm anxious to get this done as quickly as possible, because I want to make sure we get in the funding thing for next year. But the difficulty is, is I, the one number I will not have on the 17th is what the cost is as a result of the amended plan. I think it's going to take them, if the plans are available as early as the 14th, which we're hoping they will be, I still don't think that until we decide we're happy with it, that ONG wants to go through the effort of trying to estimate it, because they really want to know that we're not making further changes. You know, if we look at that plan and say, well, we got to move this, we need that to be different, I don't like the way this is laying out, you know, everything they would have done would be right down the, you know, the pipe, so they really want us to be happy with it before they estimate it. So we won't have the dollar number on the 17th. We may have it a week later, or less than a week later, and we'll provide it to you.
Okay, but it would be nice if on the 17th, we can, you know, have a good conversation about numbers, attendance, student numbers, and what conceptually we're looking at, and so we get a real handle on it, and then obviously, the final number would come just before we vote to approve. We're still going to vote to approve, aren't we? I'm a little worried, we're doing a lot of stuff without actually voting, for instance, the evaluation, and then this, it's a lot of kind of.
Valerie, I don't think the board is in a position to be able to vote to move forward with this project. We're taking it a step at a time, there's work being done, we're trying to get there as quickly as possible, so I appreciate your eagerness, but I don't think we're being remiss in not voting on it yet, we're trying to assemble information.
Oh, I agree, and there have been some big changes, I absolutely agree, but I mean, you know, a lot of people are just waiting and wondering and writing letters and are concerned. Haste makes waste, absolutely, but it would be nice to get, you know.
All right. We are pushing it as hard as we can.
I have stated that the board is an interest in this and wants to get this done, and hopefully, people recognize and have faith that work is being done to bring this to a head as soon as possible. So, is there anything else for Greg? Peter?
Just, I don't know if it's relevant to Greg, but does, this came into my head. Since I keep hearing the number of students from the public people, in the public as well as on the board, does the number of students reflect the size and scope of what needs to be done structurally, or could the size and scope be reduced if there was a different projection in the numbers? How does that, does that all work?
No, the way it works is, we need a certain building to achieve the programmatic ends of the program. And it really doesn't matter if we have X or X minus some percentage. What really matters is we're trying to build the program, and that's what determines that. So.
All right, I got it. Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Greg. Education Committee, Michelle, anything here, or Michael?
You want to go, or you want me to go?
Michelle and I had a meeting with Teresa DeBrito, was it two weeks ago? No, about then?
Last Friday?
Just to have our initial conversation about upcoming meetings. As you all know, certain times of the year, we're expecting to have reports from the administration on different elements, so those dates are already taken and kind of prescribed, but I think one of the things that we're interested in getting from the rest of the board would be specific topics that you're interested in. There are dates available, and if we know that a large percentage of the board has a topic that they'd like to address, I'm sure we can bring that to the administration and have a presentation on that. So, you know, an email to either one of us would be appreciated.
All right. I just wanted to add that it felt like we learned a lot in that meeting, and Teresa updated us on some exciting things that, so we'll be hearing about some new things, about the Atlas curriculum mapping that's going on, and sort of looking at the sequencing of courses throughout the district. So some exciting things coming. October is scheduled for Todd to come and talk about the class of 2016 and the AP classes. And I know we just talked about the AgSTEM, that being on that agenda, but I think we could probably do both. I mean, based on previous, you know, those education presentations are usually 30 minutes tops with some questions, so I would not want to push that back too much, because we have a lot of other topics to get to, if that's all right, with everyone.
Okay, no, that should be all right. Greg is just going to make a presentation, you know, shouldn't be, we're not going to be deciding anything, I don't think, on the 17th, so.
Good, good. Happy to share the agenda, just can't have the whole thing.
All right, thank you. Anything? Ed advance, anything on that, ladies?
Go ahead, it's this week?
I'm going to a meeting this coming Thursday, look forward to getting.
The upper Ed connection.
Correct. Looking forward to it as a kind of co-member with Michelle. We're going to be passing it back and forth, so I'll handle that Thursday.
Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing about that. Facilities, Gregory, anything?
No, we have a meeting coming up. Well, it was supposed to be the 17th, it's being rescheduled, because we've had to bump it in favor of a building committee meeting. But we have, we've met with Don, we have gone over the various improvements that have been made to the, to the school over the course of the summer. If you notice, if you were to walk down the hallways, you will notice that all of the hallways, with the exception of the middle school, until it was just done, but over the summer, all of the hallways were redone, all the hallways were redone with the same treatment as the mall. The middle school hallway had to wait, and it just got completed now during the school year, because they ran out of that particular run of resilient flooring, and they had to create some more, so we had to wait for that hallway. But that's now been done. So we have now done all of the hallways in the building with that treatment, with the LED lights, with the painting, and the color scheme, and the resilient flooring. And it really looks terrific. If you've been in the teacher area, you will see that that has been completed, or largely completed, Don. Are we still waiting for a few pieces of furniture, I think? But that's moved in a very good direction, and as you can see, it's not a spa, it is a workroom. And so we've made a lot of progress on moving the school forward and getting a good appearance to it. We've also replaced the windows in the cafeteria, that entire run of windows has been replaced with screened windows and the whole nine yards there. So that's been done, and Don, correct me, is there anything other, another major thing that we've done in the high school, in the middle high school, or the 612 school?
Right, and if you have not been in the pool itself in a while, I suggest you go in there, because the level of noise and sound is substantially attenuated by the improvements that were done earlier. It is an entirely different room, and the scoreboard has been replaced by, I think that was a, was that a parent group that did that? Or the swim, yeah. Yeah, they purchased it and we installed it, so there's a new scoreboard in there, and the pool area looks tremendous, it really looks fabulous. The interior of the pool has been done up nicely, the tiles are now all in good shape and everything, and it really looks terrific. So I urge you to go down there and have a look at that, that's a vast improvement. Also, the walk-off carpet coming in from that door, from the exterior of that door, has been replaced with the new walk-off carpet, and you should walk on it to see, because it will literally grab whatever's on the bottom of your shoes and remove it before the people get into the hallway. So it's actually working exactly as intended, and we expect it to be very good this winter to keep down our maintenance of the resilient flooring. So that's pretty much what's been done here at the, at this building, and we have a list of elementary school projects that will be done over the course of the next year under the elementary fund for those schools. And that's all been done in accordance with previous discussions with the three towns. So that's the facilities report, that's where we are.
Thank you very much, Greg. Is there anything for Greg? When you have something to do, give it to a busy person. Thank you very much, Greg. Finance, Valerie?
Yes, we met just prior to this meeting, and one quick thing I wanted to just show you. The treasurer's job is to go in from time to time into central office and check all checks that were written over $5,000, non-contracted checks. But the staff there gives me, or any treasurer, any check over $5,000, so you go month by month and take a look at it, and sometimes, I mean, you know the vendor, so there's no big questions, sometimes you don't know the vendor, and I'm mentioning this only because there was a vendor I was not aware of for professional development, and I asked a series of questions, and boom, got all my answers. So there's checks and balances of what we do in the finance committee in general, and as the treasurer work on the over $5,000 checks, I think, is really a good system. And again and again, if there's any questions, boom, I get the answer. So we went over the financial report for September 28th, in which we are certainly still very much in the black, at 5% versus 6% the previous month. These statistics really are kind of meaningless in a way, because we're always in the black, we have to be in the black, and the comparison to a previous year or previous month, it's just the timing of when we make expenditures or encumbrances, but it's always good to see. So we went over that, had a few questions. I think the thing that kind of stood out the most is the fact that we have had a change in our bus expense, pushing up to about $90,000 in our favor. When Bob joined the region, we had 26 buses going all over the place. These are non-special Ed, this is just regular buses in the fleet, and then now it's 21, and he was able to save $55,000 to our fleet now, is 20 buses, so that's really good. And then there's also a special Ed bus, we saved about in excess of $30,000, because they were able to accommodate two wheelchair children in a Lyft bus by being rather artful, by ripping out some seats. So, once again, we're saving every month, and this is a savings of $90,000 just on the surface. the surface. There was nothing else in the monthlies, which is great. We talked about the heating oil prices and the diesel fuel and the electricity generation that Bob's always on top of, trying to set the price and these prices are going down. I.e., heating oil, our current price is $1.95, very enviable. But Bob is looking at setting for the 2017, 18 years, somewhere around $185, maybe back up to $195. But to hit that at the appropriate time, same with diesel fuel, once again, with electricity generation as well. So, with the help of our consortium, we are always taking advantage of the very best prices. We then discussed what the committee wants to look at in the future is aggregate spending discussion, in which we kind of itemize spending per building. And we have that, it's on the website, it's something that's already prepared. But maybe we can fine tune it over time so we can really see what we're looking at per building, how to operate per building, per child. Because there's a lot of conversation, including an article in Spectrum, I think, about our cost per child versus other school systems. Some of these things we can explain, some of these things are just where we are and the kind of state mandates that we have to deal with. So, we're going to begin that process of beginning to get a little more detail in our budget and that'll be all to our benefit. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Valerie. Any questions for Valerie? All right, thank you. None? Okay.
General?
Long-range planning, Alan is not here. Is there anyone who's on that committee that hasn't met recently?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
No reports? Okay. Negotiations, Greg, any report?
Microphone to work, there we go. Yes, we will have our first session of negotiations on the 12th of October.
That's what the teachers use.
The teacher contract, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Policies and bylaws, Michelle, we have a lot of, go ahead.
Yes, sorry, we have a lot of policies on the agenda for tonight. Many of those were from our meeting at the end of last year. So, but we did meet last week as well and are moving some more policies forward. We are getting close to the end of our...
Audit?
Well, we actually, we complete, yes, yes. Close to the end of the audit. It was the audit, we then had them, we first did all of the required and then we had them do some wording, had Cabe do wording for us. So, we are getting close to the end of the audit. I just wanted to say that, two things. One, every month I get updates on what's happening and policies that are being looked at or that the state is under evaluation. And Teresa has done a great job of keeping us on top of things. So, if we were to be audited again, I think they would find very little. Because not only are we managing to plow through the audit of things that had been, had, we had missed, but we're staying on top of what's current for this current year. So, and that's through a lot of organization and hard work from her. I also just wanted to mention that, so Cabe is our, you know, the Boards of Education Association that does a lot of things for boards of education. But one of the things that they do is have lobbyists that go to the state to lobby for the agreed-upon agenda. And if you go to their website, the Cabe website, you'll find the 2016 whole agenda. It's several, it's, I don't know, about 10, 11 pages long. And maybe what I'll do is I'll put together a summary of what is there. I spoke with some other board, at one of the regional meetings, some other board members, they have a Cabe update every month on their, on their meetings. And I don't know that we need to go there. But in November, so next month, wow, is a meeting of the delegation and we will be meeting to vote on this agenda.
Is this a Cabe policy?
Well, it's, it's, it's a Cabe in general. It's policy though, because once the state enact, makes any kind of move or law, then it comes back then to the policy to enact the policy, you know, back to the committee. So, that's where there's this relationship of laws that the legislature passes, then coming, you know, then coming back to us. So, it's interesting, I mean, there's a lot here. And this is our association and this is what we're supposed to be kind of up on because they're working for us in trying to either enact new things or reduce the number of things because there've been so many, so many things passed that seem, yes, a little burdensome. But I've also felt that there's been an under-representation of small districts. And the, some of these things affect us differently. So, I'm trying to just figure out how this all works and kind of trying to get up to speed on a lot of the, a lot of the, but it's, the things that they're lobbying for encompass, you know, labor relations, finance, education, curriculum, attend, all aspects. So, I don't know. So, anyway, so I'll maybe put together a summary of what's on the agenda for this year. And if, I think moving forward though with small districts and the, a lot of the funding and the recent lawsuit with the state, I think it will behoove us to become more involved because I think we're going to be getting a lot of scrutiny.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you're getting involved.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Michelle? All right, any old business? Valerie?
I just want to draw your attention to the fact that we are not having a meeting on November 2nd. Is this a typo for the 7th? Under future meetings?
Maybe we just didn't get that far. November 2nd is the regular board meeting.
Well, that's, it's supposed to be the 7th, it's a mistake. Thank you, Val.
You are having a meeting on day before election.
Yes, we are.
Oh, come on.
7th, it's not the 2nd.
Want to make sure?
Yes.
No, maybe it'll be a good distraction.
All right, Valerie, thank you for catching that.
Okay, so Finance Committee meeting's the 7th, as well as Board of Education Business meeting on the 7th.
7th.
Thank you.
I don't know how, but...
Yeah, the 2nd is a Wednesday.
The other old business? All right, moving on to new business then. Michelle, first reading, policy 5115, evaluation slash support.
All right, 4115.
I'm sorry, 4115.
So, all right, if you open up your packet that was sent, as usual, all new language is in yellow. This is about the State Evaluation and Support Program. So, there is not a lot we can do. I mean, it's, if you don't like something that's in here, we have, I don't think we have that option. I just really don't. Sorry, I just, we don't. Well, and then also some of this is negotiated with the teachers. So, the largest change is towards the end, it's under dispute, the dispute resolution process. And Teresa updated us on how this will affect the process here in our district. She's really the one to ask if you have questions about that. So, that's about all I'll say about that.
Move, move to adopt as a, for a first reading?
Second to, okay. Rebecca, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Pat, you're satisfied with the method dispute resolution? I'm sorry.
Yes, we are satisfied. This had to be worked out with the PDAC committee, which is made up of teachers and administrators and myself. And it all came with the new teacher evaluation program, if you remember a couple of years ago. So, this is vetted and I approve.
All right, does this, does this program still use a significant component of high-stakes testing as part of it?
It's a small percentage now. It's a 45%, but half of that are test scores and half of them are assessments in the classroom. But the test scores can be, they don't have to be, well, they haven't been any high-stake testing because the testing has changed so much in the last couple of years that we've really been using fully formative assessments from the classroom. Benchmark assessments in the lower grades, we do phonemic awareness, fluency, et cetera, et cetera.
So, you're actually not using the test scores, really?
Not at this point. But there are some, some groups that might be here and there if you are, you know, you get to choose with your evaluator what you want to use. So, for example, if I'm teaching an AP course and 50% of my kids this year got 3, 4s and 5s, I may say I want to make it like we did with ours, the net 55% or 60. You can go that way. But any test score that you use, any assessment that you use, has to be a conversation and you have to reach consensus with your evaluating administrator.
Who reaches consensus with the evaluating administrator?
The teacher.
The teacher. So, it's a matter of consensus between the teacher and the administrator. So, this is not a situation in which a teacher is having imposed upon them the use of test scores as a method of evaluation?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Anthony?
Very quickly, just for I want to question, is the evaluator, can that be a department head or does it have to be an administrator?
The evaluator, the principal is the one that gives the final rating for every teacher. The evaluator can be anyone who has an O-92 certification. So, that's a certification in the state of Connecticut where you could be a principal or a department chair. So, most people have the principals. But in the high school, I can tell you Mary Ann Mars is an evaluator because she has the O-92. A couple of other, the new Nicole Martone has the O-92, she evaluates. But...
What about like Lori and...
Lori, yes, Lori and Kim, absolutely. But I'm just saying, so they may do evaluations and it gets put into the teacher evaluation computer format. They may do, they may divide them. You know, there may be somebody in English where Lori does one and Nicole does one. But the final evaluation, because what happens is it all goes into this program that has a formula and it comes out and it spits out your evaluation, exemplary, proficient, basic, and developing. And that's what the principal is the one in charge of, making sure it's done correctly and making sure that she signs off on that.
Thank you.
Rebecca?
Michelle, on the data management section at the bottom of page 5, it's highlighted in yellow, but it's referencing 2014, 2014 and 15. Is that, is that that it shouldn't be yellow or is that the wrong year or?
Wait, is it after dispute? No, wait.
Yes, before...
Oh, right, right under it. I think 2014 must have been when, because the seed is changed every year. And so, it's, and each year after thereafter is what that says. So, I...
Even though we're adopting it now though, I just, I don't want us to adopt something that references a point in time in the past that we can't go back and change, that's all.
Well, you can't go back and change something that occurred in the past.
Right. So, that's just my question.
Well, maybe we could look at that.
Yeah.
Approve it for a first reading, we may be able to change that. Is there anything else? All right, there's a motion's been moved in second to approve for a first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. 9.2, first reading, policy 5111.1, foreign exchange students. Michelle?
All right, again, new language is in yellow. I think it was the immunization requirements that are set forth by state law and then the legal references that flagged this particular policy because everything else is pretty much the same as it was before.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Greg's got it, and then seconded by Michael. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving 5111.1 as first reading of the board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it's unanimous, thank you. 9.3, first reading, policy 5112, students' age of attendance. Michelle?
All right, again, new, new language in yellow and old language has a line through it. State law changed. You'll see where it says a child of 16 in the middle of the second paragraph is lined through and it's 17, you must be 17 to consent to withdraw, to consent to leave school. Oh, yeah, I think that's, I think that's the major change. What's this one? The 10 days, yeah. That's it.
Greg?
I will move to the upper, a first reading, second for first reading.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? All right, thank you. All right, 9.4, first reading, policy 6146, graduation requirements. Michelle?
All right, so 6146, make sure you're opening the right one because there's also point 2 there and it's listed, or it's first in your packet. But, so graduation requirements, you can see a lot of strikeout because as we were phasing in, moving away from the block schedule into the seven-period day, the amount of credits a student could get changed. So, all of those previous years are now being struck. There are some changes though that have come through the state. If you scroll down towards the end, sort of in paragraph form, what I would like to say is that Teresa and Kim spent a lot of time looking at this, looking at our curriculum, making sure that we're matching up and that we're in alignment. There were some changes in social studies, you know, they actually specified, you can see, American history, I think there's a civics requirement that wasn't there before. So, so this, this graduation policy complies with the new state graduation requirements and they were very happy with this. They felt that it fit what we are trying to do here and what we are currently doing. So, I guess if you have, I think it's important to take a look at this because it's sort of one of the things that says who we are. And so, you know, and there aren't that many places where the board really gets to set, weigh in on, policy is one of them and the graduation requirements is one of them. Having said that though, I would not suggest that we make any changes to this without going back to administrators, obviously. But...
Was there a motion to approve for a first reading? I think that's...
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there anything further? Valerie?
So, I am on page, if I'm on the right one, page 5 of 8.
Okay.
And everything is yellow.
Yep.
And absolutely everything here has gone through because we're not qualified, the rigors of our administrators and our superintendent.
Actually, several times, like this has been on our docket for a couple of months at the end of last year and we kept going back and forth. And we struck out a lot of things that the state had thrown in that was sort of extraneous that we didn't, you know, didn't fit. It wasn't, or maybe Cabe threw in. Anyway, yes, it is, they've met several times.
Okay, and then my other question is, I see everything is lined out. I'm just surprised that we have a policy that was so detailed, like for the class of 2014, item 2. I mean, you know, we kind of predated these things. I mean, it was planned obsolescence.
Well, we knew that, but we needed to, we needed to publicly state it so that as we were transitioning through, there was a place for the graduation, you know, for parents, a recourse, you know, a place to look back to. So, but yeah, now it's gone and we can strike all that.
Michelle?
It, it looks to me like most of that stuff is still in here, but with, in this paragraph that says commencing with the class of 2018.
Oh, yeah, yes.
You've pretty much got all the things in there. It's just that they have, you've eliminated the classes that have already passed from the scene.
Right, the graduating classes, not the, like academic classes.
Graduating classes that have passed. Graduating classes that have passed from the scene have been eliminated. You've now gone to 2018 and thereafter because we're past the transition point.
Right.
And, and we still have a rigorous program. The only question is, is this, this is a 25, it has been for several years, a 25 credit. It used to be more. It used to be 28 if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, but we did reduce it.
But we did reduce that to 25, which is the state line. Do we have any students who take more than the 25?
Sure, every year, graduating seniors have.
Do we want to consider?
In the 30s.
Do we want to consider?
Not anymore, though.
Conferring some status on that, you know, give that some name or something if students are taking extra classes beyond what their graduation.
Supra graduates.
Well, yeah, not necessarily that, but it might be some type of, there might be some distinction in doing that if it matters. I'm just asking, I'm not suggesting.
I don't, I don't know that more is always better, but.
All right, there's been a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Policy six, 146, graduation requirements for a first reading of the board. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes unanimously, thank you, and still two to go. Policy 9.5, policy six, 146.2, statewide proficiency mastery examinations. Michelle.
Yeah, so this reflects the update in the change in the state exams away from the CMT into smarter balance. Do not be confused, though, because, well, actually, so it's, used to say capped because we still use that for science, but we struck that and just said whatever the state is using. We just said state exam so that we don't have to continually do this. Did we do that with SAT as well? Or did we actually say SAT?
I think we said SAT.
I don't think it's on.
I'm not seeing it. Yeah, so, so basically we just, we. Yeah, well, great, they might. We didn't want to have to continually update this, so we pretty much said we will, we will use whatever the state says we have to.
Couldn't all the policies be written that way? Oh, gosh.
It's good to know what they are.
Is there a motion to?
Move.
Valerie?
Second.
Michael seconds. It's been moved and seconded to approve this for a first reading. All those in favor.
Question.
I'm sorry. Further discussion?
And this goes for the previous policy. I'm assuming we're going to have to develop eventually a graduate, graduation criteria for AgSTEM. Would they get the same diploma? Do they graduate with a different diploma, with a different designation? Because their requirements will be different.
What AgSTEM does is you still have to meet the requirements to graduate, but a lot of, what, basically what you're doing is your AgSTEM classes are really your electives. They fall under, where you're probably not taking the arts or any music or any technology in those areas, you're, you're, you're under the AgSTEM umbrella. So I'm sure different classes have different requirements, but you're still going to have to meet the requirements of the state as far as English, social studies, math, science.
Yeah, is my understanding that there are some that are cross?
Right.
They meet both, the, the agri-science requirements and the graduation might be a science class or it might be a tech class that would meet both, but, but they still have to meet the state, you still have to take all of your English and your math and everything.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So, six, 146.2, statewide proficiency mastery examinations has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, any abstain? All right, it passes unanimously, thank you. And finally, 9.6, first reading policy nine, 326, videotaping at Board of Education meeting.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're very welcome. So Teresa was actually able to pull up several samples for us to look at and we, we took a look at them and chose, chose this one because we felt that it, it met, it was the easiest to understand and met the requirements of what we were looking for. You can read it, it's very short, but basically, I mean, we, we all realize, you forwarded us the law, everyone is allowed, private citizens are allowed to record our meetings. However, what this would ask is that, that they inform the chairperson that they intend to do so and then the chairperson would then inform the board that we are being recorded. It's, it's like a courtesy so that you don't sort of just look out into the audience and realize that there's another camera pointed at you. And the, the one question, I guess maybe for several meetings, we'll need to just, we would need to inform the public.
Yes, you would.
Right, so, so I'm not exactly sure, you know, how that piece would work.
I would announce it.
Yeah.
You know, for several meetings in a row until it got, the word got in. That's what I would do.
Right, that, which would make sense. I mean, there, there just wasn't a, you know, a regulation along with this explaining how to do this, it's just, this is what the intent was. So, take a look at it and see what you think.
All right, is there a motion on?
I'll make a motion.
You make the motion?
Yep, first reading.
First reading, all right. Second by Rebecca, any further discussion?
Yes.
Greg?
I would just note for the chair's, the chairperson's, chairman's benefit that the provision in here is, is that you have to announce that these, inform the public that these devices will be used. So I take it what this means is, is that if you don't announce that, that there are no devices that are being used. But the question becomes, what do we do if somebody recorded, didn't tell us and we didn't tell the public? And I, I just don't know, I mean, it's, it raises a question.
Excuse me, I'm just, I, I don't have an obligation to announce it.
Number, number two, I think, is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, the board chairman will permit the use of these devices during a meeting only after informing all those present the devices will be used. Now, I don't know what it means if, if for whatever reason you don't inform them and then later the meeting's recorded, does somebody then have a complaint against us or?
Rebecca?
Well, I think, to tie the frame saying, I was looking at number five with a similar thought. I think that, for me, there's, there's kind of two categories. There's the category of the recordings that we know that we do, that we plan to do, and then there's the issue of members of the public reporting. So for example, under number five, this says any recording of Board of Education meetings shall be made available to the public under the Freedom of Information Act. I don't think that this is the intent, but as written, that would be even if a private citizen made a recording, that it's technically supposed to be available under the Freedom of Information Act.
Correct. Correct.
So I think, and you just need to be clear in terms of that we can only control what we are aware of and what we are, what has been sanctioned. We can't say, well, you know, John's public made a recording on the meeting on this night and so a Freedom of Information request was put in, so we have to provide ours and they have to provide theirs.
Yeah, if, if you look at, I think, one, two, and three are discussing the private person taping situation and four and five with regard to the Board of Ed. And it can just maybe be modified, yes, meetings, well, the entire Board of Education, you know, may be recorded by the Board of Education, just refer to the Board of Ed and.
Well, I, I think that, I think the simplest way is to just say in five, any recording of Board of Education meetings made by the Board of Education, made by or on behalf of the Board of Education, just insert that and I think you're good.
Well, can we do that just because it's convenient? I mean, any recording should be, as I read this.
This is somebody's policy that was suggested to us.
Yeah.
What authority does this board have to bring? Well, I don't know that the board has any authority to bring a claim to the Freedom of Information Commission saying that I want Mr. Public.
They should, I think, but the way I'm reading this is that it should be made available if requested, so someone, let me finish. So that if someone out there is recording us, they must be aware of the fact that they might have a request to see the video.
No legal authority to do that, though.
No.
Yeah, I think, I. They're responsible for their recording and they might be asked to present that recording in a FOIA request.
I, not a FOIA request because a FOIA request is only seasonable against a governmental entity, they're not a governmental entity. Now, if somebody sues them, they may be able to get it via a discovery request and litigation, but that's what you'd have to do. You can't get anything from the public except by some other legal means. You, you, they're not, the, the Freedom of Information Act does not apply to anybody in the public who records it, doesn't apply to them. So I, I, I think it's just important to make sure that, to make that change to five that we talked about, just to make sure that we're not responsible for anything but us.
It clarifies, absolutely. And it's the first three, Valerie, that, that, when you were, when you sent us the state statute saying that private citizens have the right to, but that Board of, the Board of Ed may have policy governing that. So what, that's what we're doing here is we're trying to, we're trying to establish that, that, that they check in with the chairperson before the meeting and may, announce that the, well, not announce to the board, but to the chair, that they intend to and that the chair can then inform the board so that there's sort of a, a check in there. If somebody doesn't do that, though, there's not a lot we can, a lot we can do.
Again, this is suggested policy, this is not the law.
Yeah, exactly.
Somebody else's policy.
Well, but the law does state that it's up to the chair and to the board to make the rules and regulations around it, which is.
As long as the person is unobtrusive and in the back, they have a right.
I'll, I'll send it to you again because it says all over the place, may, it does not say must. And that's why I was pressing for exactly this. I think this is a good policy, but it's not something that we must do, but we should do, to allow other people to come and video. But yes, indeed, I didn't even know you had to inform everyone, but you better inform them.
Well, you don't have to. That's, that, the informing is, is what we're considering our policy. Their right to do it is law, they can. So, but we're putting a structure around that, a procedure so that we don't all of a sudden just find ourselves being recorded by someone else. So, so they're allowed to as long as they meet those criteria of being unobstructive and everything, yes.
It still spooks me out, though, because I just know those videos are on someone's Facebook and God only knows what they're putting on.
It feels like stalking, I agree. It, it creeps me out a little, too.
And by the way, institutional memory here, we have had cases where people, and I think it was our, our dear friend from Bridgewater, would tape, hold up his tape recorder and he was asked not to. And in the deep dark past, one of my first few board meetings here, people did tape and they were asked not to. So it's not an automatic thing, I think we've evolved, it's all good to be open, but it's not necessarily everyone's right and you can restrict it, certainly, but there are too many cameras here for some god awful reason.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anything else on policy nine, 326, videotaping at Board of Education meetings? Do we have a, a motion? We do, and it's been seconded, moved and seconded. Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes, thank you very much, Michelle, thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, Michelle, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, 9.7, to consider it appropriate to approve gym floor repairs at Chappag Valley School for an amount not to exceed $35,000 as recommended by the Facilities Committee. Greg?
I would be, yeah, happy to take you through that. We had originally planned to, i- if, if you remember the gymnasium, there is a metal strip that goes down the middle of the gymnasium, it's a track, and that strip was used to take a, one of those folding walls that would cut the gymnasium in two.
Yes.
That wall has not been used in eons, it, I don't even think it moves anymore. And the strip is not a tripping hazard, but it's an annoyance in the floor that there's this metal strip down the middle of the floor. So we had been contemplating this summer, making repairs that would have removed the strip, replaced wood, put wood in there, and then refinished the floor. And, and having done that, the other thing we were going to do at the same time was to add in the middle of the floor our new Chappag Spartans logo as opposed to the one that used to be there. And so that was all part of the plan for the summer, but unfortunately, the hallways cost a little more than we thought they were going to cost and we had to put off the gym replacement. And then this fall, in September, we had a student suggest a senior project where they wanted to repaint the lines on the floor and repaint the logo in the gymnasium. And the problem with that is that our, our consultants had said if you repaint that floor over, without redoing the, the strip down the middle and refinishing it, it's, it's going to be a mess, it's not going to work well. The other problem we had is, is our intention is to fix that strip problem in the floor. So we, we told, we made it clear to the student that, that they, they, they want to, they want to think carefully, if they really want to go out, raise money and make a senior project, to do something that's going to be torn up probably by the end of the year, by next summer at the, the latest. And so we were working through it, we came to the conclusion that it would be really nice if we could facilitate this project because we really wanted to do it. And Bob did a masterful job of finding some money that we could use to do this. And we would propose that we spend this money, have that, that, that strip removed from the floor, get the floor re, that, that strip replaced with wood, refinish the floor and allow the student's project to repaint the lines and the logo to go forward. This will be done professionally, it's, it's going to be done properly. And that way, this can be done in time for the basketball season.
This is refinishing the entire floor?
The entire floor will be refinished. Actually, Don sort of redoes the floor every year anyway, so we were planning to do that at this point in time in the year, in any event. So the real question is, it's, it's really, is that strip in the floor should be done? So finally, our gym floor will be a unified wooden floor and it'll have the proper logo on it. And we have just about succeeded in eliminating the old logo from the, from the school. There is one place I have seen it, now I can't remember where that is, but I think it's in a hallway, down the athletic hallway somewhere, there's something with.
Facilities needs, unless there's an emergency, in which case, you know, obviously we have to attend to an emergency. And the fact that we ran over on some projects here means we can't do some other things. I just, I like an orderly process of what should be done, what the priority list is, there's enough work around here that I, I think it's well-intentioned, but unless it was something that had been discussed for a good long time as a priority and a real need and should be done at some future time, but it's the urgency to please a student that bothers me.
Okay, well, let, let, let me say, first of all, that I did a very inartful job of explaining that. This actually was the next item on the priority list for things to be done and it had to be stricken because of cost overruns on something else. The, the, it's not so much, I mean, look, we are here to educate students and the student's idea and plan was something we were planning to do anyway, the question is timing. Do we do it now in order to get this done with a student project in mind and for the basketball season or do we wait and do it in the summer? Which would have less of, I think, we, you know, one could argue that it's a different year's budget if we do it then, but as long as we have the money available, this was the next item on the project list.
All right, Michelle?
I, I commend the Facilities Department on working with the student. I think this is one of those times where the senior, with the senior projects, the real world and kind of collides with their academic world and it's, it's really nice to see that happen. It was, if it was next on the project list anyway, I think it makes a lot of sense to move that forward so that it can dovetail with the senior project. And if the senior, if this student is raising money towards it and it was something we were going to do anyway, it actually might cost the district less if we do them together simultaneously. So I think it's sort of a win-win and I completely support this.
Thank you, Bob.
There's also that, I forgot to mention, excuse me, whatever the student raises is going to go and be held at the high school at the conclusion of the fundraising, that's going to be used to offset the $35,000. Because that's how it's going to work out. We're going to pay the 35, we don't really know how much they're going to raise, but if they could raise the whole 35, it's going to question nothing. Whatever they raise is going to be applied towards that project.
That's, that's a lot.
If, if, if she raises $35,000.
Oh, I thought you were going to put it in.
I, I'm writing a check now.
Tagley will do it for you.
I think it's, you know, we, we saw the, we, we saw the, the impact that we had in investing in some of the, the quality of life features around the school, starting with the mall and now the, the hallways. And there's a lot of effort being put into coming up with a new logo and I think there was, if I recall, rather violent agreement that that new logo was a huge step up and, and up and up compared to what we had and, and it was great and we were trying to get it out there. Now I feel like we've, we've put almost a half a million dollars into the hallways and the mall and the teachers' workspace and we're going to stop short by not taking and the mall, and the teachers' workspace, and we're going to stop short by not taking the last place where that logo lives, in the middle of the gym floor. It's like 35 feet worth of diameter in the middle of the gym floor. So I think for that alone, you know, we, let's, let's finish the job here. So Pat, my, my last question for you is to, let's finish the job serious with the logo. So if there's other places where this logo is, we got rid of it, we got rid of the shades in the cafeteria when we did the windows, you know? Thank you, Don. You know, now we've got this, where else does that old logo live? And what do we have to do to help you?
Eradicate.
Get rid of it? Yeah, eradicate, it's very good. Thank you. Once and for all, and, you know, and if there's a price tag associated with that, then let's get it prioritized as well, but let's finish the job, would be my recommendation.
All right, there's a motion to approve the $35,000 as recommended by the Facilities Committee, item 9.7. Is there any further discussion? All right.
I'm just curious, I know some, some of this is maintenance, but why not take some of it, if not all of it, out of the 1%? My concern is that we just started a new budget year, and, you know, we can't ask for more for this next budget year. If we have one calamity, one problem, one poor child moving in that needs intense special ed services, we could blow through that budget. So why not the 1%?
You could, you could actually make the motion if we discover, I mean, at the end of the year, hopefully we'll have the money to put into that account. If, in fact, we recorded under the general budget, and we blew through everything less the one, that we're up to the 1%, we would just put less in there. I mean, at some point, it'll balance itself out. Right now, there seems to be enough money in this existing budget with where we saved some money along the way already, to cover this, plus it won't be the whole thing. And we already, in reality, had the money to resurface the floor, because that's an annual event anyway. It's this $35,000 with one vendor at this point, that's the issue.
Well, we have a balance of $313,000, give or take, in the 1%. And, and once again, my concern is the operating budget is set. Can't get more from the taxpayers, but we all have it in here. And if it qualifies, I think it should come out of here.
Well, this is one of those situations...
We could change the motion.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
I was going to say, this is one of those situations in which, if you look at it, just solely look at it out of context, you see that the, the, the removal of that strip and replacement with wood is probably capital. The refinishing the floor is probably maintenance, since we do it anyway every year, but if it's done in, if we're doing anything extra to do, to redo that floor, because we're removing the strip down the middle and replacing it with wood, then it could fall into a capital thing. But I think you're kind of on, you know, you're on grounds like this. Bob, if we were to reach the end of the year, and can we defer this decision on taking it out of the 1% fund, or are we, once we make this decision, we're stuck?
I think you could, I believe you could go back and actually do it out of the 1% further into the year. The big question right now is, it's a $35,000 contract, and where that funding comes from is, it's already partially already in this budget anyway.
You're suggesting to allocate it out of this fund?
Yeah, out of the...
The account?
Out of the general operating for the time being.
Now...
If we're problematic, we could go back to the 1%.
Now, my recollection is, we did submit this for, you did put out an RFP, Don, on this, did you not?
There's, there were three.
But we got three, we got three bids.
Right.
Yeah, well, if you got three quotes, that's what it is. So we're in compliance with our policy on requiring three quotes for this amount to a single vendor.
And that center section is, it's really more than the track, because it's soft in that spot as well. It's, it's kind of caving itself in in that center section. If you go in there, you'll feel it. That's what's got to get replaced.
Yeah, that could be, that could become dangerous at some point, so we really need to do it.
All right, is there anything else? Michelle?
I just, I just am in favor of taking this out of the, the operating budget, and Valerie, I hear what you're saying about, you know, concerns for making it to the end of the year, and, and I'm glad, Bob, that you said that if we're in a pinch towards the end of the year, we could then take it from the 1% fund. I'd rather not take it from the 1% now, because the unique thing about that fund is that we can carry that forward. So I'd rather use operating money if we have it available, so that we have that there for a true capital emergency of, of a roof, or a heating, or something, because we might not need it this year, but we might need it down the road, and we can't carry operating forward, but we can carry the 1% forward.
All right, is there anything else?
Yeah.
Greg?
Just that I, I think in past years, the principal things that came in and gave us the, the surprises were the addition of, of, of students that, that came in during the month of August, or July, over the summer, after the budget was passed, but before the school year. So I think now that the school year has started, while we can't say that we're beyond the likelihood of that, we're probably a much less likelihood of that. Bob, does that make sense?
Every month that goes by, your, your odds go down.
Right, but especially after, especially after the start of the school year, because people would tend to come in before that.
It can still move in.
Could still happen, yeah. You could still have it happen.
Most anything can happen.
Yeah.
And, and I might, it's, it's a real risk. So if the board wants to approve to do this work, that's fine. It's just that we have our 1% money, we have some money already designated to do the refinishing. I'm just a little worried, once again, we're only two months into the budget, and one month into the school year, and a lot of times, we've played it really close when we do have some kids who come in. That could be a $100,000 overnight expenditure. I just think the 1% is the better way to go, but that's my conservative treasurer hat.
Thank you. Anything?
We're glad you wear it.
The motion to approve the expenditure as recommended by the Facilities Committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstention, Valerie. All right, the motion passes. Thank you. 9.8, "To consider it appropriate to approve 2017-18 school calendar." Dr. Costino.
Yes, this is the year that you are mandated to follow some of the regional, the RESPs regional calendar. So you'll see that Election Day is now a PD day, and we didn't do that this year.
There it goes.
And so you'll just see, you have to follow the spring break, you have to follow the Christmas holiday recess. So I think it's a, a good calendar, but put together, administrators have looked it over.
Michelle?
Two things. One, just, while Teresa and I were looking at some graduation policy, there's apparently a state law that a graduation date cannot be set before 180 days have been completed or something. So I just, I just want to make sure that we're following that.
It's 185 days.
185 school days?
Yeah, that's what your policy just read. And so when you look at the first year, you'll see that 183 days is June 12th.
Mm-hmm.
So 184, 185, 186. So we're, right, 186. We're good, we looked at that.
Okay. Well, but then if snow days happen, we have to tack it on. But, I mean, it, it does say pending appro, board approval in October, because by then, oh, wait, Octo...
Here we are.
No, that's 2017.
Yep.
So that's, in the year of your, you...
Right.
Oh, wait a second.
A year from now.
Right. Yeah, but we wouldn't have had the snow days. Okay. Anyway, I just want to make sure that we're following, we're following that, because you do have to tack on, you do have to tack on the snow days. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about is, I know there's some wiggle room on the start date. You can move a couple days before, after. And just starting on a full five-day week, I, I've gotten feedback from parents that it's kind of tight. We used to always start with three, and then four, and then five, and I, I don't, I don't know how, what that would, I mean, I guess it just pushes the whole calendar back to start like on a four, you know, with a three or a four-day week.
Can I just give a little?
Yeah.
I am a firm believer that we should get in as many days as humanly possible before the new school year start, the January 1st, because I just feel like, once you hit January 1st, you get a lot of weather.
Yeah.
And so to me, you know, we start with five days. I think it's a long week for people, but, you know, it, it is what it is.
Okay.
I think, you know, we're troopers. I can tell you that the calendar, the RESPs calendar, has everyone starting on the Wednesday.
The 30th.
The 30th.
Okay.
I move it back to the 28th to start on that Monday. I just think it's a Monday, you're starting the week. It's certainly something that we can talk about, the administrators are okay with it. I think, you know, kids are resilient. Five days, yeah, you know, it's...
No, it makes sense, I was just wondering.
You know, and then what happens is, the week of the 21st, we get a lot of work done with new teachers, professional development, orientations, so that's just how I feel.
Okay.
Certainly.
Greg?
I move that we approve the 2017-2018 school calendar, including the dates at fourth of graduation.
All right, moved in second, and any further discussion?